Um, do we have to read that thing first?
Yes. Do you want me to do that for you, Liz?
Sure, thank you.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot Sturbridge dot gov slash town hyphen administrator slash pages slash how hyphen access hyphen virtual hyphen meeting. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and/or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455, enter 1428 pound for the meeting number, and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting.
Thank you, Jean. Um, we can go ahead and start with the minutes from March 17. Does anybody have any amendments or corrections?
I, I do. On page four of the minutes, um, I, I think, I think we need to add, um, more information on the motion. Um, let's see, after, um, uh, the property located at 65 Western Drive, I think it should say, as shown on a hand-drawn plan by the applicant, and then I, I think we need to add also...
Oh, wait, wait. Wait one second.
Okay, sorry.
I'm trying to find where you are. As shown on a hand-drawn plan by the applicant?
Yeah, because we didn't really have any planned plans, so I think it needs, and then I, I, I think we need to add also, um, the proposal does not intensify the existing or create additional nonconformity, and the owner may apply for a building permit for the described activity as shown on the plan.
Okay, do we have to second that, or?
No, that's, no, that's fine.
We just accept the amendment?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any corrections or amendments?
No, but I have something on the agenda. It says that the minutes were, uh, March 21st.
Oh, that's a typo. It's March, March 17th, I believe, is the correct date. Let me see.
Yes.
The minutes say 17.
March 17th.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, okay, so all those, uh, well, I guess we'll have to take a roll call vote to, uh...
But, but you have to make a motion. You have to make a motion.
I think so.
I make a motion.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the amended minutes of March 17, 2021, um, as, as, um, as written.
Amended.
Amended.
Okay. Um, somebody second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Fidelis. So we'll start with, um, Marge, who are absent. So Mike Young?
He's muted.
Mike, do you...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
I, no. Yeah. Are you gonna, are you voting in favor of accepting the minutes?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Fidelis?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Tom?
Tom, you're muted.
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes, so that's unanimous, and then Marge would be abstaining because she was absent.
Thank you.
So now...
Make you the president.
Get to the, uh...
Brian, do you want...
Public hearing?
I'm sorry, Liz, excuse me, one second. Brian, do you want Janay to put your plan up, or do you want to put it up?
If she can put it up, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, Liz, sorry, all set now.
That's okay. So we're good, because we're, we're having a public hearing for a special permit at 20 Cedar Lake Drive for Brian and Sarah Oxman. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow the demolition of the existing home and an outbuilding and the construction of a new single-family home and outbuilding on the property. Um, do we have to read the, the public hearing notice now?
Yes, you do.
Yep.
I can read it, or Diane can read either one.
I, um, I, I, I don't care. I mean, well, should, right? Well, wait, shouldn't the court read it? I mean, usually the court reads the notice.
That's correct.
Michael, Michael, do...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the notice text in front of me, so if somebody else has it, feel free to read it.
Do you want me to read it?
I'll read it.
I can read it if you'd like.
All right, keep going.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing virtually on Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, at 6:35 PM on the application of Brian and Sarah Oxman. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20.05, and Chapter 24, Section 24.09, subpar paragraphs A through E of the zoning bylaw, to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing nonconforming structure or use for the property located at 20 Cedar Lake Drive. The applicant is proposing to raise and rebuild the existing single-family home and shed. New foundations will be built to support both buildings. A second floor will be added to the single-family home, and an office will be located in the shed. The home will be constructed within the existing foundation, and no new nonconforming setbacks will be required. A new deck system will be added to the structure on the north side, which will increase the lot coverage. Therefore, the applicant is also seeking a special permit to allow an increase in lot coverage from 17.22 to 23%. The Zoning Board may elect, consistent with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 20, to hold the public hearing virtually, in which case details respecting the same, excuse me, will be made public by, excuse me, Zoning Board of Appeals in advance of the hearing, and will be posted here, HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot Sturbridge dot gov slash town hyphen administrator slash pages slash how hyphen access hyphen virtual hyphen meeting. For those unable to participate virtually, written comments will be accepted in advance of the public hearing. The proposed request can be, can be viewed on the town's website, or an appointment can be made to view the application and plan by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov.
Thank you, Jean. Um, before we vote, um, we received information from Jean, the head of the planning department, also from Conservation, that they did review and approve these plans on April 6th, 2021. Uh, the fire department has it, their usual about the, um, carbon monoxide detectors and smoke detectors. Board of Health, uh, commented about the, how the applicant needs to apply for an application to decompose, decommission the shallow well on the property, and to complete water testing of the artesian well after the new building is built and prior to occupancy. And Department of Public Works, um, did not have any comment. So we can start now. Um, you can make your presentation.
He's making it. Okay, I don't, uh, Brian, are you gonna start, or who do you want to start?
Um, I, I can start if you like. Lenny and me, we can just go back and forth.
Go ahead, and then I'll proceed.
Okay.
Go ahead, and then I'll pull in, fill in.
Okay. So originally, Sarah and I purchased, uh, Lot 20, so 20 Cedar Lake Drive about eight years ago, and then there was, uh, a property next to us, 18 Cedar Lake Drive, which was owned by Eric Evanson, so there was a house on, uh, the property, which is, um, looks like a peninsula there. That house burned down about, it's hard to remember, a seat of five or six years ago at this point. He didn't rebuild, and the property went to auction. We purchased it at auction, and we have since, as of January, combined the two properties, and are looking to tear down the existing house on 20, and to build something a little bit wider, and we're gonna pull it, agree with the Conservation Commission, to pull it back from the water so that we're beyond the 25-foot barrier. Uh, we also agreed with them to, um, we'd like to keep the, the boathouse, that's on the water, but we wanted to tear it down and, and rebuild it about four and a half, I'm sorry, an additional four feet, so it'll be five and a half feet from the shoreline. Uh, the ability to get further away from the shoreline is challenging, because between the house and where that boathouse is, is the grinder, uh, for the sewer line connection. There's not too much we can do there at the moment, and it also backs up to a telephone pole that we'll have to, you know, work with National Grid on when they come out to do a, a survey of it. Uh, but that was really the idea here, so it goes from our original property on 20, was I believe about, it was 30, I think 34% lot coverage. So now by purchasing 18 and combining them, the new structure will bring us down from 34 to 23%. So this is actually, I, I look at this from my perspective, I look at this as an improvement of lot coverage, um, by purchasing the land and not trying to build another whole separate house, trying not to rebuild the house that was on 18. Uh, is there anything, Lenny, that you would add?
Yes, I'd like to add a couple things. One, one fact is that what's quite impressive is that Landscape Evolution came up with a, uh, improvement for the shoreline, which is 300 to 400 feet along Cedar Lake itself, uh, with new plantings and soil erosion control, uh, prevention in that area, which was impressive by the, uh, uh, Landscape Conservation Commission, and because of the amount of work that was, uh, put in in, in presentation for the site itself and the improvements, that, uh, they, they agreed, and, and the Conservation on the 6th approved everything on the site, which I thought was quite remarkable. I think that Landscape Evolution definitely, uh, deserves credit for the amount of effort that they put into getting this done. The thing is, you gotta look at, that we're coming up with all kinds of numbers for this thing, but what actually transpired is that the house on, now locating on 20, was actually at 33.6% coverage, and then the house on, uh, 18 was actually 16.6. So if you took both of the houses together and left them as is, it would've come up to 24.9%. Uh, what we're doing now is we've eliminated the house that burnt down, uh, put in new, uh, leaching bases on the site for, uh, soil erosion and soil control, and now we're ending up with, uh, 23.1%, which is, uh, a definite setback for, for the, uh, the site itself, and I think it has a definite improvement, and I think it will be beneficial to the town, because it is located in an area that is serviced by Town Sewer, and it has a private well, and I think environmentally, it's an outstanding piece of property that's been created for the Cedar Lake. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any questions?
Thank you, Lenny. Yes, um, anybody want, have any questions right off the bat?
Um, can I make the comment, though?
Go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to, to say that, uh, all these two lots well-free date our zoning bylaws, and the original, uh, was built in 1935, the house, so we have two lots, you know, and, uh, the new home, since it's gonna be constructed within the same footprint of the existing foundation, to me, that is a good thing. So that's one of the comments I have.
Can I, can I just make one, one clarification on that?
Yes.
Is, um, I know that, that foundation being in the exact same footprint, originally it was, it was pretty close, and then after Conservation, because they asked us to move it behind the 25-foot barrier, it gets a little bit wider. See, on the, on the plan, you can see the existing foundation, house, and then you, and the darker orange line is what the new foundation is gonna look like. So it does slightly change.
I already increased it.
Yep, it, it gets wider, yep, I'm sorry.
You have that included in your revision? Is that what constituted that revision?
Yes, yep. The revision was to pull it back from, from the water, and, and I...
There's nothing was stated in the, uh, in the comments, so that was a little unclear to me, because in other parts, it said that the foundation was going to be in the same footprint. Thank you for clarifying that.
Um, I, I actually went to the property and visited the property, and, um, that, the shed isn't really a shed, it's really a cabin, right? Is it, will the new one have electricity and hot water and, uh, water and heat?
Yeah, so the, yeah, to, just to further explain what you were just saying there is that the, the cabin today has a toilet, sink, and a shower. That hasn't, it predates, you know, us living there, so it doesn't look like it's been used in years. Um, I, the Conservation asked me, like, how is it connected? Is it connected to the sewer? It's not. And it doesn't just drain into the lake, it's connected, I believe, to a dry well, but, like I said, it's not, there's no water that goes to it right now, that's been shut off. Um, what we'd like to do is to completely rebuild it and turn it into an office. So that would have, it may have a shower in it, it may not, may just have a toilet, may not, we're not, we're not really sure at this point, um, but we'd like it to be an office, ideally. So it might, it would probably have some level of heat, uh, but definitely electricity. I hope that helps.
Okay, thank you. Um, what, what were the dimensions of that cabin?
It's like two, yeah, it's like two...
What are the new dimensions?
Uh, the new dimensions will be exactly the same. The Building Department made it clear to us that it has to be the same height and same dimensions, so the, it's a main square, which is 10 by 10, and then I believe there's like a small rectangle off the side, which is 6 by 8. Uh, all in all, it's, I think it was like 160 square feet, is what's in the, I believe, the property card. And I, just to answer a question before...
There's 208 on your plan.
Hmm.
The plan says 208 square feet.
208, is that what you had, Lenny?
Right. What happens here is, is the building itself, if you look at the picture, there's a, there's a picture, just to the left, it would be the southwest corner, was, was, was a patio over there, and that's part of the, uh, the structure itself, and that's why we came up with the 208 square feet, uh, because it just shows that section that's there. The, the, uh, the original, uh, building itself was 156, and 156 didn't include that patio, which we added into, uh, the building itself, because it's part of the coverage.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, Tom, do you have any questions?
No, I haven't, thank you.
Diane?
No, no question.
Fidelis?
Uh, just one question regarding the, uh, the shed. Is the new development gonna be included, is the rebuild gonna be included with this development, or is that something that's gonna be coming up at some other time? Because I don't, I don't see the, I don't see any plan for it in your, I don't, in the, in the, in the building plan.
That's, that's a great question, yep.
Yeah, may, may, may I answer that? What actually takes place here is that the shed itself becomes an integral part of the submittal to the Conservation Commission along with the structure. Uh, once this work is done, the certificate of compliance would have to be, uh, completed. Uh, in the event the shed is not constructed at the time, and the certificate of compliance wanted to be issued, that would have to state that it would not be, uh, allowed, and it was not built, and it'd be dismissed from Conservation, and it couldn't be rebuilt after that, so it, it's covered within their covenant as far as the property's concerned.
And to answer a little more directly, I think something you asked there, I thought, thank you, Lenny, was that we're, our plan is to tear both down at the same time while we have, uh, the contractor there, build the house, and then in November, redo the wall when the lake is down, and then when the wall is solidified, then we would go to, you know, get to the point of trying to build the, um, the cabin. We didn't want to build them at the same time, because we want to make sure the wall is solidified first.
Any questions here?
What, Marge?
Yes, uh, I would just like some clarification, because whenever they do what they're anticipating doing on the shed, make it an office, will, won't they have to come back to us for modification or something on, to approve it?
No, that was part of this application, Marge. I think Fidelis's question is, there's no architectural plan submitted for the shed, but the shed was proposed as part of the application, and it's to be rebuilt to replace the existing, and I think, Fidelis, that was your question, what will the shed look like? And the building inspector has met with, um, we had a meeting with Mr. Oxman, and the building inspector indicated that it had to be rebuilt exactly, basically as it is now, so the same character and, and same height and, you know, shape.
All right, that, that was where I was coming from, will it be the same?
Yes.
One thing I'd like to, yep, sorry.
A little more, a little nicer than what it is now, but yes, the same. Now it's, it's, uh, more of a, a shed right now than, uh, imagine at one time, it was probably a nice boathouse.
We found a newspaper in the base, in the bottom of it, underneath a board that was from 1930, so it predated the house, another five years, and it was pretty cool, so, yeah, I'd like to try to rebuild it exactly.
All right, that was my question, because since you're changing the use of it, I was wondering if it was going to be the same, and, uh, as long as it remains the same, basically a new, same structure, you know what I'm talking about?
Yep, absolutely.
Um, all right, that, that's all my concern was, thank you.
All right, Fidelis, did you have any more questions to add?
No, no, that's, that's it, but just, just on the, on the shed.
All right, I, um, Mike, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, no questions, looks like a very well-thought-out plan.
I, I just want to make sure I understand, so the cabin slash shed, which is 10 by 10 and 6, with a 6 by 8, the new one, is the new building, A, gonna have a foundation?
Um, no, it's gonna be suspended above, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think I lost my, uh, my video there. It's gonna be suspended above the ground because it's in a, um, a flood zone, so the, uh, the building committee has said it needs to be off the ground by, they said they're gonna let me know exactly how far. Right now, it's actually on cinder blocks. The existing cabin.
According to, uh, yeah, excuse me, according to federal regulations, the, uh, building will have to be extended height-wise, that the, the floor joists have to be one foot above the flood elevation of that area there, so, uh, the, the actual, uh, floor itself would be, you know, roughly two, two and a half feet from the existing grade right now.
Would that be on, on son...
And the other part...
Liz, I'm sorry. Will that be on sonor tubes or something?
It would be, it'd be on what they call piers, yes.
All right, piers, okay. Thank you.
And then the other part of my question is just, I want to make sure I understand, the new structure is gonna be exactly, it's gonna be the same 10 by 10 with 6 by 8 attached, or is it gonna be different?
Uh, that's our plan. Our plan is to follow the exact, what it was, rebuild it exactly, as, you know, our, our agreement with the, um, with the Building Department. You know, they were really gracious in, in having a conversation with us, we'd like to keep it exactly as is.
Okay, thank you. So is there any, anybody else on the board that has any questions? Seeing, is there anybody in the audience that has any questions?
We're looking at that right now.
Is there anyone on the line that has any comments or questions regarding public hearing for 20 Cedar Lake Drive?
No, there's no one on the line.
Okay, um, the only, only thing is, like, on the application, on page five, it says the shed will be renovated for a private office for the owner, it doesn't say that it's gonna be raised and rebuilt. Should that be on that application?
Um, it's on the plan that says raised and rebuilt, so I think we're good.
Okay. All right, so then the other one, it says new foundations on page four, new foundations will be built to support both buildings, but in reality, it's only one foundation, correct?
Yeah, if it's pillars or, you know, as Lenny said, if we're not gonna be putting a foundation for the, um, yeah, it would only be one.
The, the shed itself, according to the FEMA regulation, that the pier construction on that would be a standard foundation for the flood control area, so that's the way it goes.
So that's considered a foundation?
It is considered a foundation.
It is a foundation.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you. All right, um, just, and, and, and there are, any, any, have any questions?
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, somebody want to second that?
Second. Second.
I seconded it already.
Thank you. So a motion is made to close the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Seconded, so we'll take a roll call. Uh, Marge?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, um, okay. Does anybody have a motion on the findings?
I do. I have a motion on the find. I make a motion to find that the proposal by Brian and Sarah Oxman for the property located at twenty Cedar Lake Drive will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood because by combining the two lots, the lot coverage is less than having two homes on each lot, plus the new home and the outbuilding as proposed is consistent with the neighborhood and will not result in detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay, anyone have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mike? And we'll take a roll call, vote. Um, Tom?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes, should we add, uh, the plan number in that to it?
That's in, that's in the, uh, that's in the special permit.
All right, okay, I, it's, okay, thank you.
And myself is a yes. So unanimous. Okay, Diane.
Very well, thank you, thank you so much.
I'm not finished.
Not done yet.
Not done yet.
Not done yet. Okay, um, I make a motion to grant the special permit persistent, pursuant to chapter twenty, section twenty point zero four eight, no, zero five and chapter twenty-four, section twenty-four point zero nine A to E of the zoning bylaw to stand, change or alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure or uses for the property located, or the uses of, for the property located at twenty Cedar Lake Drive to demolish and rebuild the existing single-family home and shed. New foundations will be built to support both buildings. A second floor will be added to the single-family home and an office will be located in the shed as shown on the plans entitled Proposed Site Plan for Brian D. and Sarah J. Oxman, prepared by Javelin Engineering, planned date two eighteen twenty twenty-one, DWG number one ninety one five seven, revision number two dated three thirty twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, we have a motion and a second, so we'll start, uh, with the roll call vote. Tom?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So that's unanimous.
Now you're all done, Brian.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all your support. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll, uh, get started on the. So we will have a determination for fifty-seven Karen Road for Jesse and Jennifer Castlebon. The applicant is requesting a determination to allow the construction of an addition, landing stairs and patio on the premises. We, we did receive information from, um, Jean, from the planning department, um, the Board of Health, they had no issues, um, conservation, um, public works, and the fire department. So on conservation, four six, so you put, you have the meeting and you, you have revised plan since then or for that meeting?
Who's that?
Um, it was for that meeting.
Okay, so we have those plans set?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, you can make your presentation.
All right, uh, for having us, everybody, I'm Jesse Castlebon and that's my, uh, it's Jennifer. Um, so we just recently purchased this house. My family's actually been in the area for something like a hundred years. So, uh, many of you are probably familiar with that house there on fifty-seven Karen. A lot of people know it from being out on the lake. It's just a beautiful house, a beautiful location and we're, we're so happy to be here and to be working on it. The main problem is that the house itself hasn't been updated in literally like forty years and it's falling apart. Um, both my wife and I commute to work every day, so having this detached one-car garage really isn't a feasible thing for a, uh, New England winter. So kind of the main purpose of the project besides just making much-needed, uh, updates on the house itself, is attaching the garage and making it hold more than one car. Um, we have family, I still have family in the area, but also family elsewhere. My wife has family elsewhere who would like to come visit in the post-COVID times. We're also hoping to start a family ourselves. So in the current floor plan, it is essentially two bedrooms. There's a railroad-style bedroom, which to me is one bedroom because you can't have people coming through one bedroom to get to a second bedroom. It's not a feasible plan. Um, so using the garage or attaching and expanding the garage allows us to have some extra space to build above it. So that's kind of the idea behind all of this. We're really hoping, or we've really tried to maintain the character of the house that was built in, uh, nineteen ten. So we're not altering the external appearance. I mean, there is an addition, but we've used the same eaves and kind of the same architectural style. I think it should be, um, really just a, a, a big improvement to what they're now and I think maintaining the same character. I think it'll be a good project.
Okay, I'd also like to add, in, in the process of doing this, there's an existing garage on the site. Uh, that garage will be, uh, removed, uh, which is located on the, um, Westley's rear of, of the, uh, house. And then that, that some of the driveway that was in there before, near that, the line that marked fifty-foot buffer is gonna be removed, which is pavement. And also the, uh, walkways themselves, which are concrete, uh, they will be removed and they're gonna be stone walkways, so they'll be pervious. And then the, uh, decking on the side of the, uh, building, uh, will also be pervious and there's drip strips on the garage that's pervious. And going before the Conservation Commission, they were very impressed with the improvements and it, it, the site went through in one evening, which was, I consider quite remarkable considering the fact that it's right on the water. But the improvements that are done here, uh, they were impressed. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to ask them.
Um, does anybody have any questions? Can start with you, Marge.
Well, there again, this, as, uh, Mr. Coxman said, this predates all out zoning bylaws. And it is definitely an improvement and once you have conservation phrasing it, which I did see the meeting, you know you're doing something right. That's my additional comment, that's it. And, uh, I, there was, I don't seem to have this in front of me. There was something that the, um, fire department said about putting heat sensors above each face?
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah, we saw that.
Okay, and you concur?
Yeah.
That will be done. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Marge.
You're welcome.
Diane, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Mike? Thank you, Mike?
No, no questions, it looks great.
Fidelis?
No questions, really, really good job.
Yeah. Tom?
I wish it was mine. No, I have no questions, thank you.
Hey, I don't, I don't have any questions. I did drive out there, um, is, you know, I think it's a great, a great plan, myself. Um, does anybody in the audience have any questions?
We'll check.
Is there anyone on the line that has any questions or comments on fifty-seven Karen Road?
No, there's no one on the line.
All right, seeing no questions, um, any, and doesn't seem like there's any further discussion, so can someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion again to close the public hearing.
It's not a hearing.
This is not a public hearing? Oh, okay, then I guess we will close it.
Okay, Diane.
All right, I'll make, I make the motion to grant the dissemination to Jesse and Jennifer Castlebon to allow the construction of an addition, landing and stairs and patio on the property located seventy-seven Karen Road. Um, on the plan entitled Proposed Site Plan, Jesse and Jennifer Castlebon, prepared by Javelin Engineering, planned date three sixteen twenty twenty twenty-one, DWG number two one zero one four. As the proposal does not intensify or create additional non-conformity, the applicant may apply for a building permit.
Somebody wanna second that?
Me.
I'm sorry.
Okay, um, all those in favor will take a roll call. Um, Tom?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so it's unanimous. Congratulations. Thanks, Lenny, for the corrections.
All right, we will, um, provide a copy of the signed determination to the building inspector's office and we'll also send you one for your records, so you're able to apply for your building permit.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, good luck.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Um, do we have any old business or new business?
Um, if I may, I, I just thought I'd make a comment on, on the Oxman, uh, project, uh, just for us, it's, uh, it's nothing to do with the project. Um, just my observation and don't get mad at me, but I think, I think the item of the, um, uh, the shed being built in the same footprint was stated roughly six times, uh, you know, during the course of discussion. And, you know, I just, my feeling is maybe we should all listen a little better to what people are saying about what's gonna be done, cause it was repeated a number of times and to the point where I was saying, well, wait a minute, it's, instead he's reconstructing in the original footprint and then there are a couple more questions, are you gonna construct in the original footprint? So I think maybe we could all do a little bit better job of just listening to those kinda details going forward and that's all. I'm not slapping anybody on the wrist, but I, I thought it went, you know, beyond the ordinary, uh, of maybe a duplicate question or two during the course of the discussion. Thank you.
The, the only comment I have is I did not realize that it was gonna be Bill's last meeting last time, so I wanna wish him well publicly. Um, and I don't know about the, a new member yet. They haven't been sworn in, so they're, should we just wait and tell if they get sworn in? Jean?
Um, so our, our newest member is, uh, David Zanya. He's, um, out of town, so he was not able to get sworn in. He was going to try to log on this evening just so he could watch the meeting, but, um, obviously something happened and he was not able to join us, but he will be at the next meeting. And that's, um, Liz, if I might, I just have a couple of things before you go through the rest of the board for the old and new business, if you don't mind. Speaking of the next meeting.
Sure, go ahead.
I wanted to see, the Board of Selectmen has resumed in-person meetings again, only for the board, not for the applicant. And they've set it up in the, the Town Hall Meeting Room so that everybody can be socially distanced and then just the applicant calls in or logs into the meeting. And I'm wondering if, I would like to take a, a poll, I guess, of how you feel about that, if you're ready to come back and start with the board meeting in person in the Town Hall with no public at this time.
Hmm.
I'm, I'm okay. I'm, I'm vaccinated, so I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, you would be in the selectmen's office, uh, with the selectmen meet?
Yes, it would be, um, in the Town Hall, veteran, you know, Veterans Memorial Hall. And like I said, it would just be the board and staff right now, the, the public, uh, abutters would still call in and the applicant would log into the go-to meeting. And the way they set it up for the Board of Selectmen's meeting was they spaced all of the members apart and they set up, actually in front of us here tonight, there are three large computer monitors that are facing where the board members would sit so that you can see the applicant on there. So the board would appear as just one of these squares. So if it was just the board and an applicant, you'd have like larger squares so you could see the applicant a little better and, um, you know, it's, we just kind of wanted to offer that to start getting back to a, a little bit of normalcy. They have raised the indoor gathering limit to a hundred people. Obviously, we're not doing that, but we're saying, we believe we can keep all of the board members, you know, socially distanced, um, in the building.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with that, myself.
I think it's a good idea because I think it would, you know, it's a little difficult when you're doing it virtually and sometimes, you know, when people are on the phone or the other, you're, you know, calling in, it's a little difficult to track it. So you might have repetitive questions, whereas if you're in person, you're more attuned to it, I believe, you know? So I think it's a good idea. Hopefully, everybody's gotten their vaccinations.
Oh, I think most of us have been vaccinated, but would we be wearing masks anyway? Or no?
Well, what they did with the Board of Selectmen is they were spaced far enough apart so they could remove their masks. If you're spaced far enough apart, you could remove your mask. It's, I think it's difficult for people to hear you when you're speaking. If you're not comfortable, you could leave your mask on and then when you, when you were needed to speak, then you could just remove your mask and place it back on.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So we'll plan on, uh, May, May nineteenth will be our first run of that and I'll speak to Jeff and we'll make sure we get the room set up accordingly and we'll see how it goes.
Do we have any applications for that yet?
Not yet. Do we, oh, no, I take that back. We do have one, we do.
Oh, yeah, we do.
We do have an application. Can't think of their name. Can't think of their name right now, but we do have one application.
Is it a special permit or...
I can't remember without logging into the system.
That's okay.
Give us one second. We can let you know.
Okay, anymore? All the new business?
From the board, we have to do the organization.
Special permit. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, I'll ask that again. Anymore? All the new business?
Um, actually, just one thing regarding the, uh, you know, meeting going forward from next month. Is... Are we still going to have an online option or is it just going to be in-person only for board members and staff? And then for applicants, they will have to remotely? Is it going to be a hybrid system?
It will be hybrid, yes. So, it will be board members and staff in the building and then applicants and abutters will log in or call in. So, it will be a hybrid. It will just be the board and staff in the building.
Yeah, so what I meant to ask was for board members and staff, do we still have the option of, uh, calling in remotely or we absolutely have to be in?
I think if somebody were uncomfortable or had a reason why they didn't want to attend, they could call in. I think what we want to avoid is like a big split. So, for example, the planning board, we had three members who weren't quite ready to come back. So, we decided we're going to stay virtual for another meeting or a few more meetings because the board would be split. So, there wouldn't be a great benefit to that.
Yeah, okay.
Can I make a motion to close the meeting?
Uh, one... I just have one quick more thing. I'm assuming at the next meeting, you'd like me to put reorganization of the board on the agenda since we just had the election? That's normally when we do it?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right. And I'm just confirming we are... Our plan is to have an in-person meeting for that one with those that can attend. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Motion's done.
Like yours.
Okay. All those in favor, just raise your hand. You don't have to... All right.
Stay healthy.
Goodbye. Have a good night.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Thank you, everyone.